Okay, welcome everyone. Sorry for the few minutes delay. We all have those days where things just go wrong when you're trying to get out the door. Today is my day. Welcome to the November 17th, 2025 meeting of the Carver School Committee. I call this meeting to a quarter. If everyone could please join us in the back of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just very quickly this evening, I would like to just ask everyone to please join us in a moment of silence in honor of Barry Struski, who served on the Carver School Committee for many years and was previously the chair, who passed away this past week. Thank you very much. We are grateful for his service and just wanted to quickly recognize his memory. And now that brings us to MCAS recognitions.
Thank you. So I'd like to start tonight with some recognitions of several of our students who scored exceeds expectation on the MCAS exam. So we want to congratulate and recognize some of our students who met that standard. To all of our students, this is an outstanding accomplishment. That is a testament to your hard work, perseverance, and commitment to academic excellence. You have demonstrated not only strong mastery of the content, but also of curiosity, critical thinking, and determination that sets you apart as high achievers. We as the Carver School community are incredibly proud of your success and we're excited to watch you continue to grow, to continue to challenge yourself, continue to inspire those around you. So for all of our students who've reached this level, keep reaching for new heights because I know that this achievement is just one of many that you're going to have throughout your lives. So we just want to do a recognition. What we'll do is we'll call students up. Students, if you can come forward, we'll give you your certificate and then we're going to ask you to remain standing up front and then at the end we'll do a pic. So who was first? You're the first one up here. Then we'll do, we'll do some pictures for the community and with the school committee. So that will run up some of our students. Mr. Griffin's going to help me out. So first Dexter Costas for outstanding MCAS. Andrew Mel for exceeds expectations in math. Lee for exceeds expectations in math. Brandon Lee for exceed expectations. Sonia Lombardo for exceed expectations in math. Zachary Machado for exceed expectations. Lila McKenney for exceed expectations in math. Marley Mahoney for exceed expectations in ELA. Lexi McDonald for exceed expectations in math. Emily McMorro for exceed expectations in math. Mia Valores for exceed expectations in ELA. Devin Mullin for exceed expectations in ELA. And Kalen Potthea for exceed expectations in ELA. And I'd like to just call all of my students. I'll picture, picture with the school committee so we'll all get together. Taller people in the back, shorter people in front. The school committee's going up, get a little tighter, just a little picture of the parents and.
Come on, look happy about this.
Quite an accomplishment. Can we squeeze him this way a little bit? Sorry for that. That's it, perfect. Okay, if you can look here, we'll take two pictures of parents when we get right out of you.
Stay there.
Congratulations, everyone. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting if you'd like. Or you can break the door.
Thank you.
While you run for the hills, run while you can. This is my favorite part of the whole meeting is the recognition of the student ambassadors.
So no, I did not see Tom here this evening. Tom is not in the meeting. And he, I didn't talk to him today, so he didn't say that he was not coming by to see them.
No, she's not my friend today. Okay, so it does not appear that one of the EAPC is with us. So we will move right on to comments from the elementary ambassadors.
So please welcome Daniel DePurcio and Owen Dalquest, who are going to be our student ambassadors.
Okay.
Just give me one, one second, only Daniel, let me get the presentation up for everybody.
Okay, remember, I'm red. Welcome, everybody. I'm Daniel.
And I'm Owen.
We are student ambassadors from Carver Elementary School and we went, want to share some of our great activities happening in our school. The kids who took MCAS, which just happened just a couple months ago, in third and fourth grade in the spring were recognized for, for a great job of receiving, exceeding expectations on their MCAS.
When we, when we did our MCAS recognition, students were encouraged to work hard in school to be recognized. Congratulations.
Hang on, what score do you wish you got?
Maybe six, seven.
The pumpkin parade is celebrated by the first and second graders who at home take pumpkins and make them book characters. I remember making Eric Potter pumpkin when I was little.
I remember making a pumpkin years ago. Classes are encouraged to walk down the halls and check out the cool pumpkins. On our fifth grade field trip to Tin Marsh, I caught a fish. Me and my friend also caught a big spider, but we put it back in the water.
There was a lot of nature. I recommend going.
It wasn't ed, it was educational. We learned about snakes, birds, and old trees.
Third grade did a field trip there. They walked around the, oh, third grade did a field trip. They walked around the center of Carver and went to the police station, fire station, the library, and even the post office.
I, I remember, I remember going on that trip.
Good times. I did not make it this year, but I know that it is and I have been before. It has a long line, but you can get candy all owned by this trunk or tree.
I know a little more about this year and I know that teachers dress up as stuff that kid, that kids would like. Mrs. DeMarche dressed up as six, seven, which you can see on the board.
Okay. There were other fancy costumes too with decorated trunks.
Let's not forget the candy.
Anybody want to hear a candy joke?
Sure.
What is Andy's favorite candy? Andy's candies.
There is going to be a school-wide kindness poster contest. There are going to be prizes in each grade level.
Posters will be displayed in main foyer and everybody to enjoy. I wonder if a student ambassador will win? Question mark, question mark, question mark.
Kids will get to show their creative side and spread kindness. Hope you win. Family game night is going to be on November 20th.
Oh, now here it comes.
From six to seven.
It's for all ages to play games that help with math and reading skills such as Yahtzee and Monopoly. Just don't get too mad.
Why would you get mad?
Losing a game. Warning, you have to have good sportsmanship. Sorry for all you sore losers out there. Have a great evening.
And remember, above all, be kind. Stop it, stop it, you know, be kind. Have a good evening.
Thank you. That is epic. Thank you so very much.
Can we close the meeting now because nothing's going to top that today?
Nothing's going to top that.
Someone want to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, that was so good.
I love Tom many times. I worked in six. Thanks so much for coming.
Unless you want to stay for the boring part.
I know, you're more than welcome to. That was just so awesome. Thank you very much to our Carver Elementary School student ambassadors for joining us. So great. Okay, so that brings us to the comments from the general public portion of our meeting. I'm not sure if there's anyone online in the chat.
There's one person on Zoom.
Okay. So if the person that is on Zoom.
Oh, on Meet, sorry.
Okay, sorry, yes, that's right. Is on Google Meet. If you would like to be recognized to speak during public comment, if you could please just put your name into the chat. And if there's anyone here in the room that would like to speak, if you could just please come up to the table to be recognized. No movement? Okay, so seeing no movement in Meet or in the room, we shall move on to the approval of minutes. And we have three sets of minutes to approve this evening. Open session from October 20th, 2025. School committee building tours from August 23rd, 2024. And the school committee building tours, Bus Barn from December 21st, 2024.
I move that we approve the open session meeting minutes from October 20th, 2025. I approve, move that we approve the school committee building tours from August 23rd, 2024. And I move that we approve the school building tours at Bus Barn, December 21st, 2024.
A second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to point out that you weren't at.
I was not, I was not at the Bus Barn.
I don't know why we vote for all.
I will abstain from that. I guess we should probably take them separately.
Okay, take them separately, okay. I move that we approve the open session minutes for October 20th, 2025.
A second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve the school committee building tours for August 23rd, 2024.
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I move that we approve the school building, the school committee building tours, Bus Barn, December 24th, 2024. December 21st, sorry, 2024.
A second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. And I will abstain as I was not present. Thank you very much. That brings us to communications and the Carver Journal.
Yeah, so a couple of communications this evening. The first is, I guess I want the community to know that there is a new online newspaper in Carver called the Carver Journal. And I, the person who reached out to us is a school district, is Sarah Hewens. So Sarah reached out and she's part of the journal and she's actually connected with our journalism class. And we've actually had three articles from students published in the journal. One from Alana Burbine, one from Charo Benenbevu, sorry, P N Venu, and one from Kyle Carey. So right now Sarah's talking to and connecting regularly with our school journalism class. The students are providing articles for their editorial board to review and some of those articles are being published. Right now, when you go onto the site, it doesn't have their articles up because they were previously published, but I just want, I just want to pull the site up, show that it exists and show that the Carver Journal is working with our Carver Middle High School Journalism Class and some of our student articles are being published.
Excellent. Thank you very much for sharing.
And then also a second one is just the Reed's annual report. I'm not going to necessarily go through the report, but it's in the background for the school committee review so that you're aware of the, we've actually had several conversations about the big thing happening in Reed's, which is the opening of the deaf and hard hearing program, which our, the goal is, is that building will be open and students will be in it after the holiday break. So that's coming along, that project is coming along well.
Great to hear. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the superintendent and personnel updates.
And so since our last meeting, we have had some personnel moves. We've had new hires. Emmeria Meach is in food service. Madison Mulkern is an ESP specialized at the elementary school. And David Fazino as a CDL bus driver floater. Transfers, Michelle Bell from CDL floater to CDL driver. Ashlee Pendleton from ESP kindergarten to ESP specialized at the elementary school. Richard Pegory as custodial second shift and to custodial second shift team leader. We've also had a couple resignations. Catherine Donofolio for food service. Jamie Bottom as a CDL bus driver. Kelsey Foster is an ESP in special education at the elementary school. And Teresa Varzano is our director of food services. So, you know, obviously we're sad to see all of these people resigned. Teresa has been, really done a great job as the director of food services. I will, we will miss her as she moves on to other opportunities.
Okay, so that brings us to the AP and SAT exam overview.
Glad to welcome Mrs. Cabral, who's going to go through an overview of our AP and SAT exam scores.
Welcome, Mrs. Cabral.
Hi, do you think, is this a new and improved microphone here?
No, it looks not.
It is, it looks that way.
I'm like, did the kids swipe the mic or is this the?
Christina, just give me a sec. I need to share the presentation with those at home. All right, we're ready.
Thanks. So my presentation will be short and sweet tonight. We're overall very happy with the results of our AP and SAT scores. So I'll start with just the SAT scores and with the comparison of how we performed on average in, against the state and the national results. So we exceeded the national average in both the reading and writing and math. And we performed just under the state in, in both. And I think that the third column, which shows the comparison of both of the results together, I mean, you can tell it's a real slim margin, both state and national, we're pretty close. But what's, what is noteworthy is to compare Carver versus Carver. Our, we improved 12 points in our reading and writing. So from our last year's scores to this year's scores, we improved 12 points. And in math, we improved three points, but it's moving in the right direction. So. And then next I'll report on our S, our advanced placement exams. I know you know, but I'll just review the student performances scored on a scale of one to five, one being the lowest score on the exam, five being the highest. And my presentation tonight will focus on scores of three, four, and five, students who performed three or higher. And that's the important score because a lot of colleges will accept their performance on these exams as college credit. So that's why we focus on that. So while you see here the comparison of 2024 to 2025, there were fewer exams administered, but there's an increase in the percentage of students who scored three or plus. So while slightly fewer exams, there's an increase in scores three or plus. But what's really noteworthy here is three years ago, it's not up there, but in 2023, we administered 132 exams. Thirty-six percent scored three or higher. And then in 2024, as you can see, 159 exams, we improved from 36% to 67. And we continue to move in an upward trend with 74% of our students. So again, it's good results for these exams. So if we go to the next slide, I'll just give you a brief rundown on the student performance in each one of the exams. The, and the overall goal as we look at these, like our goal is we'd like to outperform the global average and come near or exceed the state average in the results of these exams. So in our English language and comp AP exam, we did that. A hundred percent of our students scored three or higher in this exam and eight students participated in it. The lit in comp, we exceeded the state average, which was 81%. Global average was 74. Ninety-two percent of our students scored three or higher and 12 students participated in this exam. European history, while there's a slight decline in our overall average performance, we did exceed both the state and global averages. And it's also important to note, there were 11 students that took this exam. And at Carver Middle High School, we administer it to 10th graders, where a lot of high schools will administer it to 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students. So it's a little bit more challenging maybe when you're younger, taking them. A lot of them, it's their first AP exam, so they performed very well. U.S. history, we exceeded again, state and global averages. 14 students took this exam, 92.9% scored three or higher. There was, of the 14 students, only one student didn't score three or higher on the exam. Psychology, we continue to fall a little bit short in psychology. We, you know, of course, we'd like to close the gap on that and we'll continue to work on that. That's a large class size. There were 19 students that participated in that exam. Physics, the same. While we've made growth over the last two years, of course, our goal is to close the gap on this and come a little bit closer to the state and global scores. But I, I feel confident that we're going to be moving in that direction. The teacher who teaches this, his, he's in year one of his two-year cycle for his evaluation process. And through conversation with myself and his department chair, he's go, he has written his professional practice goal and his student learning goal aligned toward improving the AP scores in this physics exam. Statistics, we made great growth. Not only did, not only did the score improve, 70% scored three or higher. So it's tremendous growth, but there's also a large student, increase in student enrollment. Fifteen students took the exam last year. There were 20 that took it in the 2025 results. But we're really pleased to see that amount of growth in them. That's great. Calculus. The past two years, we've outperformed both state and global. Seventy-eight percent of 14 students who took this exam scored three or higher. And this is the second year that we've administered the pre-calculus AP exam. We performed just slightly below the state and global, but overall we did well. There were 20 students that took it and 75% of them scored three or higher. A hundred percent of the students that took this scored three or higher. There was only one student enrolled in this virtual high school course this year. But in the, for, this is only the third year that we've administered this exam. But the last year, there were two students enrolled. So we scored 50%. One scored below, one scored above. But this year, the one student that took it scored higher than three. And then our biology scores are kind of all over the place. There were eight students that took it. Sixty-two percent scored three or higher. And that's just slightly below the state and global average on that. And then our last exam is the AP environmental. And they're really doing outstanding. Same teacher doing outstanding job. Ten students took the exam, 90% scored three or higher, which greatly exceeds the state average, 74%, global 69%. So overall, we're very happy with the, the results of these.
Yeah, these are, these were really strong AP scores overall. You know, pretty consistently, we were above the state and the global average and some of the percentage of kids scoring three or higher. And that's all we're going to do, we'd love it to be that way across the board on all the exams.
Awesome. Good job. Excellent.
I just showed up and talked about it. They're doing a good job. The kids, the kids are working hard, teachers are doing great. Yeah.
But that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, good news.
Good news, we need good news.
Right? As much good news as we can get. So that takes us to the Carver Pathways presentation.
Okay, so Desi actually recently released that what they're calling a data story about career and technical programs being offered in high schools across Massachusetts. And looking at when this data, when this data story, as they call it, was released, there was some information here that I thought was really interesting for us to look at and gave a little bit of an opportunity to talk about our pathways programs and then our career and technical education across the state of Massachusetts and kind of where we fit in. So I thought that might be a nice thing for the community to hear. And then also just a good reminder for the pathways that we offer and remind the community of the, the great program we offer at, at the high school level through pathways. So there's a couple slides here that are directly from Desi. I'll credit them when they're there. This slide is right from Desi. It's just their definition of what they consider to be a CTE program. I won't read it to you, but I'll leave it up there for a second, just for people to look at, saying that this is their definition of what is a CTE program. And then the second part of that, again, this is their slide. And in essence, they're going to say there's, there's actually four, they identified four different types of career and technical education programs. And they break them into those buckets. And as Carver High School, we're not participating in all those buckets. And they, I even acknowledge, it would be hard for any one high school to do all four of these things. But their goal, one of Desi's stated goals, is that every student would have access to at least some career and technical programming and have the opportunity to do that in their high school experience. And that's kind of their stated goal. I think originally it was for 2027, when they first came out, especially when they launched innovation pathways, which were, which is what we're participating in. I don't know if they're going to reach that goal by 2027, but they're definitely moving in the right direction. That's what this data story is about, saying, hey, we're really trying to promote career and technical education throughout the state and here's. trying to promote career and technical education throughout the state, and here's the fruits of that, our work over the last couple of years, which Carver's been actively involved in. So, what are the four types of CTE programs as defined by DESI? And then, I'll tell you which ones we participate in as a community, which I think you know, but we'll reinforce that for the school committee and for the community of Carver. First is your, what you interestingly know as your vocational schools, your Chapter Four vocational programs. And a Chapter 74 program, students have to have at least nine hours of hand-on learning experience. And mostly, your Chapter 74 programs are run in vocational schools like Old Colony. There are some high schools that don't participate or are not aligned with the vocational school and have some Chapter 74 programs within their school. And there are some larger districts, like, I'll use Tonn as example, just because I'm from Tonn, my kids are in the Tonn Public Schools, they are aligned with the vocational school, Bristol Plymouth, but they actually have one or two vocational, technical Chapter 74 vocational programs within their school. That generally happens only in your larger high schools. Your second one is called Career Connections. And this one may be one that not, a lot of people know about, know that even this exists. And this is a locally approved programs that are funded through what's called Perkins Grants. You have to apply for the Perkins Grant, it's the only way you'd be able to run this type of program. And then, based on applying for this grant, you develop work-based learning experiences. So, you try to make it, and you make sure students get an industry credential. So, you align with some local industry, you provide them some work experience, you provide the coursework to allow them for credentialing, and these are, like I said, solely funded through what's called a Perkins Grant. Number three, what we're a bit involved in is innovation career pathways. So, participating students take a sequence of four courses, two must be technical courses that are aligned with industry credentials, and they must do a 100-hour internship or work-based learning capstone experience, which we're doing. And as the community, believe the community knows, we have three approved innovation career pathways, manufacturing, engineering, and technology, environmental, agricultural sciences, and clean energy. The fourth type of CTE program is called Early College. This provides opportunities for high school students, particularly those in underrepresented in higher education, to complete at least 12 college credits prior, as almost like dual enrollment. We've done some investigations at Early College, and I'm going to talk about some of the challenges that Early College faces. I'll get later on to the data story, but I'll say that it's something that we're looking at. So, right now, actually, this week, we have a presentation from Guidance, Guidance at the high school level's been doing some research on dual enrollment opportunities. We may not apply for an Early College Grant through DESI, we may, that's something we may decide to do. The tough part about the grant is that you have to, they have to have at least those 12 grants, so they have to take four dual enrollment courses. And, you know, one of the challenges of being a small school is, you don't want to set up competition against yourself, right? So, you have innovation career pathways, which students are required to take so many courses. And then, if they have to take four dual enrollment courses, and then also meet their regular high school graduation requirements, you're going to actually create some conflict, you're going to create some interaction in between students. And, you know, our senior class right now is around 90 students, you know, so it's tough, it's tough to balance those things. So, I don't know if we're going to 100% commit to the Early College and the guarantee of four courses, but we're very interested in increasing our dual enrollment opportunities. Because I think dual enrollment is really a great opportunity for students. You know, there are students who graduate from high school, especially at the state and state schools, where if they take two or three dual enrollment courses, plus the acceptance of their AP scores, which we just showed, which were outstanding, they can combine those things, and some students are racing a semester, even maybe a year of college in a state school. So, that's, we want to be able to provide those types of opportunities. So, I think before the end of the spring, you're going to see a proposal about us increasing our dual enrollment opportunities. Right now, we have a very small dual enrollment program, where maybe we have 10 students a year who are taking some level of dual enrollment course, one or two courses. So, we're looking to expand those opportunities. Haven't made a final decision whether we're going to actually go Early College and have it be a DESI-approved Early College program, but even if we don't decide to do that, it's going to be the same, conceptually, it's the same idea, and providing those students those opportunity to get those dual enrollment courses and to have a leg up as they transition into college. I will say that dual enrollment courses are, and a lot, there's a lot of private institutions that are accepting dual enrollment courses as well, maybe in some schools more than the AP courses. Because a lot of your private schools have moved away from giving you credit for your AP courses. They're saying, okay, you have to take our science class. Again, I'll use a very personalized example, my daughter went to Mass College of Pharmacy, MCPHS, she had had some good AP scores that weren't qualifying scores, and they said, no, no, we're not going to give you credit for those because you're going to graduate from here as a physician's assistant, so we want to make sure you take our science courses. And so, they didn't give her credit for her AP scores. But I think if she was transferring in dual enrollment credits in biology or chemistry, they would have taken those. So, you're seeing some of those things happening. So, we want to make sure we're investigating this concept of Early College and increasing our dual enrollment opportunities for students. So, this is just a little bit about our pathways, a reminder for the community, we have eight career and technical pathways, three of them, as I said, are approved through DESI as what are called innovation pathways. And really, the goal of those pathway programs provides students with an opportunity to explore careers, careers of study, preparing for workforce or for college, one or the other. What are our pathways? Clean energy, biotech, culinary hospitality, visual performing arts, MET, health and wellness, environmental and agricultural sciences, and computer science. Out in our community, if there's anybody out there watching, we have a Carver Pathway site, you can learn about any of our pathways, you can go to that site, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but we could pull up, you can learn more information about any one of those. So, if I picked on culinary, we've actually had our, we've had our video production students create new videos for each of the pathways, so our VPA students and our TV studio has created some new videos. I don't know if you want to take the time to, want to show one video?
Sure.
Show one video, why not? I know sometimes you always get good sound at home, for the person at home, and you may not get the sound on this, I apologize.
My name is Matthew Lee, I am here at Carver Middle High School, and I am enrolled in the culinary pathway. The courses that you can take throughout this pathway are ProStar 1, ProStar 2, Culinary Arts, and Advanced Culinary Arts. I have learned many life and culinary skills, but the most valuable skill that I have learned is collaboration. In the kitchen, you collaborate every single time that you step foot in it. The most useful culinary skill that I have learned here is making sure that you are comfortable and relaxed at all times. When handling knives, especially in the earlier courses like ProStar 1 and 2, you could be a little agitated while using them, making your product sloppy, you want to make sure that you're controlled, comfortable, and relaxed. Every single time I step foot in this kitchen, I take pride in my work. I feel professional when I make a great product. I'm a lime cook at LeBaron Hills Country Grill, at Lakeville, and without that culinary experience from Chef Portland, I don't think I would have gotten the job at all. I have known plenty of people in this pathway that have had jobs either interested in them or lined up with them as soon as they either leave school or even while in school.
That's great.
So, you can go out, and I invite you to go to the pathways website and watch all of the pathways videos, there's one for each of the pathways, each of them done by our students, so the students is the videos a student created in our TV production studio. So, just a great example of the range of opportunities that students have through the program. You know, obviously, if you go to the website for each pathway, it also gives you what the scope and sequence is, the required courses, all kinds of information on this pathways website, it's really not the purpose of my presentation, but I wanted to highlight it and just let you know that that was up there. So, this slide, next couple of slides are from DESI, this is their data story. And what they're saying is that this is the percentage of schools that have one of these types of programs. And DESI's put a huge focus on innovation pathways. But even still, right now, only 21% of high schools in Massachusetts have a DESI-approved innovation pathway. You know, so we were really on the cutting edge, we were on the front line of this, we were here back here when they did the, when it was 10%. And we were actually here the year before when they had just started the programming in 2001. So, Carver was really a leader in the innovation pathways fields, I guess. The other push DESI is really making a push on this Early College, so you've seen a little bit of increase in that. Career and technical education has stayed pretty steady, because ultimately, most of those programs are in your traditional vocational schools. And now, some of those schools are, obviously, we know the Old Colony is going to, looking to expand and offer more shops, you know, so that's going to be more career and technical opportunities for some students in this region. But that, you can see that that's pretty steady all the time, and definitely DESI's focus is on these two areas, innovation and career pathways and Early College. But actually, over the last four years, seen a little bit of a dip in these career connections, Perkins Grants programs. So, this is just saying that while student enrollment in Massachusetts has been a little flat, pathways enrollment has grown by 17%. You know, now, one in four schools offer some sort of career or college pathway in the state of Massachusetts. So, this is also a DESI slide, this is, now, I cheated on this a little bit, it's not the exact same data, so I'll stop for a second and point it out. You know, so obviously, and this is graduating seniors. So, in 2002, only 569 seniors in the state of Massachusetts graduated with an innovation pathway designation. That's increased, last year it was 1,621, we had 10. So, we had 10 of those 1,621 students. Across 2026, we have 14, we have 14 students who are going to graduate as, with an innovation pathways designation this year. And then, the number next to that is the 46, we have 46 seniors enrolled in a pathway. So, maybe, you know, only 14 of our innovation pathways, you know, but our other 30-some-odd students, 32 students are in one of the other five pathways. You know, so more than half, more than 50% of our senior class is in a designated pathway. And then, if you look at school-wide, school-wide, we had 32 students, now, that's why this data isn't, this says all pathways, I put it up there because it's all pathways, but when they're talking about all pathways here, they're talking about Chapter 74, career connections, Early College. I just talked about, I took all pathways for our data as all, you know, our pathways. You know, so we had 32 seniors last year graduated with pathways designation, this year it's going to be up to 46. And 107 students, 107 students building wide are in a pathway. So, there's, right now, of our student body, 107 have declared a pathway, which I think is great. I just thought this was interesting, so, a little undeviated to us, but not really. This is your top 10 programs in Massachusetts from vocational schools. I would say, I was pretty, I was surprised that the number one program that students graduate from in vocational schools in the state of Massachusetts is health sciences. Not shocking that electrical's number two, then carpentry, then culinary arts, but I was surprised a little bit that health sciences was the number one program. I do think that's a little bit of, and this is not a comment directed towards, so I'll be very clear, this isn't a comment directed towards Old Colony or towards what we do. I do think it's a little bit of an issue at the state-by-level, because I do feel like a traditional high school, especially a traditional high school with any kind of pathways program, is certainly capable of supporting students who want to go into health sciences careers. You know, we don't have the ability of the shops to do electrical, carpentry, automotive technology, it makes sense that that's happening at vocational school. But I did find it a little surprising that health assistance was number one. But also not surprising, in innovation career pathways, what's number one? Healthcare and social assistance. And ultimately, you know, the reality part of the pushback to what I just said is, Massachusetts has the most hospitals per capita in the country, there's a lot of hospitals here, there's a lot of medical facilities, we need a lot of healthcare workers, right? So, that I can see, understand the state saying, hey, we got, healthcare's got to be in every field, it's got to be in your chapter, it's got to be in your vocational schools, it's got to be in a traditional high school, it has to be everywhere because we need to graduate people in these careers. So, we actually made a, we made a strategic decision to not go for the healthcare and social assistant innovation pathway, we decided to go for MET, environmental science. We have a health sciences, we have a biotech pathway, that biotech pathway is a health pathway, it's just not a DESI-approved innovation pathway. And quite honestly, in relation to this, it probably graduates to the most students. I didn't do the breakdown, I should have, of last year's graduating class, how many of them, but I feel pretty strongly that number one was probably our biotech pathway. You know, so it's number one thing we're graduating students with. You know, and then, obviously, we had MET with eight last year, and we had two with EAS designation. And that's probably true this year, that our biotech is probably the highest number of students who are graduating. And obviously, that's a need within the community, but I also will say, I want to promote, that that biotech pathway is a great pathway for members of this community, you know, it's a great opportunity for our students. So, if you're interested in the field of health sciences, if you want to be a nurse, a doctor, or an X-ray tech, staying here at Carver High School, certainly the opportunities are there for you. I don't know if you have any thoughts on those two slides?
Very interesting.
Yeah, so, overall, you know, I thought this was, wanted to highlight that, you know, reality piece is, right now, as of last year, only 21% of high schools had career and innovation pathways, you know, so we are on the cutting edge of that, and that's something I think the community should celebrate, and it's something our staff at the middle high schools should celebrate. Really, the pathways program has been teacher-led, and we've kind of been their guide on the side as they've developed these pathways. You know, so what are our goals? We want to continue to increase enrollment in our pathways program, we want to promote and market the programs to the school community. So, part of the goal of my presentation today was to, just to remind you to the community that these pathways are out there, they exist at Carver High School, there's great opportunities for our student there, for our students there. And then, always important to remember that, I said, half of our students or half of our graduating class, a little more than half of our graduating class this year is going to have a pathways designation. That means 40, 45%, I'm going to have pathways designation, that's fine too, they're just going to have the opportunity to take some great electives, because ultimately, these pathways provide great elective opportunities for our students. And last piece here, and this has to be a focus this year and to next, is, you know, the clean energy pathway is kind of in its beginning states, so we need to take that pathway, we need to build upon it, we need to, right, last year, we, last year and this year, we don't have a student who's planned to graduate from the clean energy pathway. It's because it's new, we just started it last year, so that's going to take over time, but within two years, we need to make sure we start having students who are graduating with the clean energy pathway designation, so we want to build that program over time. And I'll take any questions people have.
Is there going to be an open house in the spring?
We haven't decided that yet. So, back to, in terms of that marketing piece, I'm not saying we're not going to do it, it's, we've just been discussing it a little bit. I just don't know if it's gotten the bang for the buck that we want out of it. You know, we'd love to have more people come in and see it, and I feel like those, those have been great experiences, you know, for our students, because the students get to show off some of the stuff they're doing. We just need to find ways to get more people involved, because we need the community and the parents to come in and see the great things that are happening in high school and the opportunities that students have through the pathways programs. And like I said, not saying that we're not going to do it, just saying, we were looking at that as a group to say, is that our most effective way to market it? Because, you know, unfortunately, the last couple of years when we've done that, when we've done those showcases, our turnout has been lower than we anticipated, well, not lower, but lower than we'd want it to be. So, we have to be really thoughtful about how to make sure, how do we draw people in to come and check that out? So, no official statement on whether or not, whether or not we have a showcase this spring.
Okay, thank you.
But it's under discussion.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you for that. I wish more people in our community would attend those.
Yeah, we'll take any ideas to get people in to come and see the great things that are happening in pathways, to draw people to our pathways webpage, and even check out the videos of, you know, I thought that was, that was a great video showcasing what happens in the culinary program.
Yeah, that was excellent.
And I think that, you know, those videos are out there, we want to get, draw people to those things and get them excited about what's happening in Carver.
For sure. That's great. Thank you for that presentation. Anyone have any questions? Anyone have any questions? Okay, so we shall move on to private and outside enrollment twenty twenty-five and attend the review.
Hey, so each year, um, we look at school-aged children who live in Carver and where they attend school. Uh, and if they're not attending the Carver Public Schools. And I've linked a couple of documents here for your review. Um, I'm going to pull up one of them. So again, just going to take the share. You know, so this, this is just a list of, so one of our responsibilities is almost like a child find piece. We're responsible to, we have responsibility to ensure. That every school-aged child who lives in Carver is attending school somewhere. And obviously, we cooperate with all the schools, just like, so we cooperate with them, they cooperate with us in terms of sending us information of if they have Carver students enrolled. So like through school choice, we have to send out to the, you know, we have eighty-two students in Carver through the school choice program. You know, so we have to send out to those school districts to say, hey, uh, we have these students who live in your community who are attending school here. You know, so it's really a cooperative effort. It takes a couple of months to put this, all this data together. You know, it's all based, this is all based on October enrollment, October one. Uh, so that, you know, October one is just always the baseline that the state uses, that Desi uses in terms of where students are. So, you know, obviously this could shift because maybe some moves have made that happened since October first. Uh, but it's all based on, uh, on the October one data. And I, so I'll just go through this and give some overviews. And then, you know, open it up to any thoughts, questions, reflections. So the overall number of students who live in Carver but are seeking, uh, educational alternatives has increased since last year by eleven students. Uh, or by point nine percent of the total school population. Last year, we had, uh, two hundred and fifty-three students or fourteen point two percent of the students living in Carver. Of the school-aged population who sought educational alternatives. This year it's two hundred and sixty-four students or fifteen point three percent. Uh, the largest number we had, which actually makes sense, it was during, right after the pandemic, was in twenty twenty, twenty-one. When it was two hundred and ninety-four students or sixteen point four percent of the population. And I actually have, in your background, there's some other data that gives you a little more detail, uh, in terms of the trend data over time. In terms of our students who are outside. And, you know, the reality is, ten years ago, it was eleven point seven percent. You know, so since that time, it's, it's, there's a little bit, been a little bit of ebb and flow. Uh, but generally, we've stayed right around the thirteen, fourteen percent. We've actually been fairly consistent in that area. We've had, you know, sometimes a new charter school might come on like MAP Academy, uh, which came along in two thousand and eighteen. That increased our percentage a little bit. Then you also see things like happen like, uh, Coyle Cassidy closed. Yeah, not that we sent a lot of students to Coyle Cassidy, but we always sent two or three. And now they've closed. So, you know, there's been a little ebb and flow in terms of opportunities, uh, for students over time. You know, obviously, our largest number is the vocational schools, which makes sense. This year we have, uh, ninety-eight, uh, students attending Old Colony. Historically, we have between ninety and ninety-six, uh, in grades nine to twelve. This is up from last year when we had ninety-two students attending Old Colony. But our agricultural school enrollment actually dropped a little bit. So we had seven students at the agricultural schools down to five. Uh, so in total, we have a hundred and three students attending vocational agricultural schools. Which is a little bit higher than the historical average. The historical average is generally between ninety-five and a hundred. Not, not a lot higher, but a little bit higher. I do want to take the opportunity, uh, because obviously I know tomorrow, uh, the town has a, a vote in terms of the Old Colony project. And one of the questions that has been asked, that I've seen asked in, in public meetings is, you know, with the increase, if that project was to pass. What would be the result in terms of student enrollment? You know, you know, obviously, they're add, they're looking to add three, uh, shops. They're looking to add plumbing and HVAC and dental assistance. And so they're looking to increase the size of the school, uh, by a couple hundred students. Uh, so obviously that's going to be a larger draw. So this is actually right from, uh, Old Colony's admissions system. So this information is from their website. They have decided to adopt a lottery system for admissions, which is going to be a straight lottery. And what they're going to do to determine how many kids will come from Carver is they're going to look at two things. First, they're going to look at, uh, uh, your historical enrollment for the previous three years. Uh, and that's going to count for fifty percent of what your town's allotment is going to be in the lottery. So for example, if we took our last three years, the average was twenty-six. So twenty, twenty-six would be point five. That would be half the factor. Now, obviously, when they start to enroll more students, that average is going to go up. And it's going to be closer to the average of what the new number is, right? The other fifty percent is going to be predictive. And it's going to be based on, and it's hard to predict right now what it's going to be in three or four years when the school opens. But it's going to be the town's share of the districts, the five schools in the districts, total eighth grade population. So they're going to count all the eighth graders in the five-member communities. So if you have a smaller class, you're going to have a smaller percentage, right? If you have a larger class, you're going to have a larger percentage. So I know, you know, we've talked a little bit about, there's a couple of small classes at the elementary school. Kindergarten class right now is only eighty-nine students, uh, which is particularly small. It's the smallest class we've had enrolled. And I'm going to hit on that when we get to, so our overall numbers. But, you know, so we enroll, we enroll A nine kindergartners. So people are a little concerned like, well, we get, is that class gets up to high school age? Nine years from now, eight years from now. And all of a sudden, a school like Old Colony is going to enroll thirty-five or thirty-six of them. That's, that's concerning, right? But, um, we don't know what that it was going to be because eighty-nine is going to be a smaller percentage. Of the, all of the eighth graders percentage, right? Uh, and I don't, I don't know, honestly, I don't know what the other five communities, what that kindergarten enrollment is. So I couldn't tell you what that percentage is now. I'm assuming it's going to be a smaller percentage than it is. You know, so Old Colony is going to be involving about, uh, a hundred and ninety to two hundred freshmen. Right? That's going to be their class size. The building is going to be about seven seventy-six. So it's going to be about a hundred and ninety kids in the freshman class, give or take, right? So right now, we're historically eighteen percent. So that would be thirty-four kids, right? So you take the thirty-four would be point, would be half of the decision. And the other half would be our twenty-six. So it would be, they would enroll thirty kids. Right? But then that number's going to get closer together after you have a couple of years of, because it's based on the three years before enrollment. So once you're into the system, then the number will be thirty. And our number's probably going to land around thirty-three kids, thirty-four kids. But then it might dip a little bit when you have that smaller class coming. So I think people can look at the long-term future is that the Old Colony enrollment is going to go from around, on average. Twenty-five kids with ninety to a hundred kids being there to around between thirty and thirty-five kids. So if we take the average, we'll take the middle number of, uh, take thirty-two, you know, times four, getting my great math. Uh, you know, it'll be a hundred and twenty-eight kids at Old Colony. Uh, in, in the, if this, if the project passes tomorrow night, uh, versus the ninety-five to a hundred who are there now. Any questions on the old, the vocational school piece? Thought there was just an opportunity through this to address that, for those concerns. Or questions, I shouldn't say concerns, questions that have been asked of me about this.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for, um, going through that exercise because there has been a lot of talk in the community and a lot of concern expressed about. What the future could mean for our district if the project passes. So thank you for sharing that math.
Going back to where we are right now, uh, we have nine students who are selecting virtual private academies. And then, you know, obviously, I only, we're starting to get away from that. You know, a couple of years ago, I was like, hey, we, before we didn't have students have that. It, this, this is a new thing since COVID, but now we're five years out from COVID. So it's not that new anymore. Students have been doing it for the last four or five years. And our number's actually leveled there. We had nine students last year in a virtual academy. We have nine students this year in a virtual academy. Very interestingly, our charter school enrollment increased slightly to sixty-nine students compared to sixty-seven from last year. But this is actually the sixth year in a row that our charter school enrollment has been between sixty-six and seventy. I think our charter school enrollment has kind of leveled off. And that certainly, three or four years ago, there was a concern that we were going to have a continued increase in charter school enrollment. And that, that's happened, right? But I think we've leveled off, and I think you may actually see a leveling off or a bit of a dip in overall charter school enrollment in the next five years. Where are they right now? Uh, we have fifty-four students at Rising Tide. Uh, we have sixteen students at MAP Academy. Uh, we have four students taking TECA. And, uh, one student, uh, attending Commonwealth Virtual Academy. So it's sometimes, it, the other thing that's hard to parse out a little bit is what's the difference between a private virtual academy and a school like TECA? They're really the same thing, except TECA, TECA and, uh, Greater Commonwealth Virtual Academy. Are approved charter schools in the state of Massachusetts. And they follow the charter school funding formula. So they're, they're, they're considered charter school students. The other virtual academy students are not charter school students. We're not paying any tuition for them to go there. They're not paying us anything. There's no cost. Besides, we lose their chapter seventy allotment for those nine students. And a lot of those virtual academies are all over the country. So the other fine line that's tough to parse out as well is. Being in a virtual academy versus being homeschool. Because homeschooling has started to shift towards virtual academies, and some of our homeschool students are enrolled. In virtual high schools throughout the, throughout the country. But then, uh, generally, that doesn't happen at the elementary school level. Generally, at the elementary school level, parents are doing what you would maybe consider more traditional homeschooling. Through a homeschool association or on their own. But when they get to the high school level, they start to look at kind of these. Uh, national virtual academies. And this, this is really an accounting question of, well, what does that person count as? Do they count as a homeschool student or do they count as a virtual academy student? And is the virtual academy, uh, does it offer a diploma? Is it, does it transfer, um, credits? Does it request your transcripts? Like there's all, they, they all approach these things differently. So sometimes we've had a little bit of a hard time of saying, that's a homeschool student. That's a virtual high school student. And so I just want to acknowledge that in terms of some of the numbers that are represented here. All that being said, we have nine students who identify as being attending a virtual academy. The virtual academies are listed on this list here. Of what, what their, what their names are. Acelus Virtual Academy, American High School, Elizabeth C. In School, Imagine Learning, Excel Academy, Penn Foster. Those are the ones we've identified as, uh, virtual academies. You can see they're all across the country, Missouri, Florida, Virginia, Iowa, Pennsylvania. And then we have our traditional homeschool students. So right now we have, um. Our homeschool's number has increased a little bit. We have thirty, thirty-four students, sorry, thirty-eight students from twenty-three families, uh, who are currently homeschooling. Uh, we've had a small decrease in our number of students attending private academies like a Milton Academy, a Tabor, or a Fair. Uh, those types of academies, that's gone down from six to four. So overall, our, our data in terms of number of students choosing other opportunities is pretty stable. To where it's been the last couple of years. Ultimately, our goal is always, we want to keep as many kids in Carver as possible. Uh, we believe in the Carver schools. We want students to be here. Uh, we want them to take advantage of the opportunities that are here in Carver. But certainly also respect families, uh, making the choice that they believe is the best choice. Uh, for their students in terms of making other options or choosing other options in terms of their education. So overall takeaways is we want to continue building out our pathways programs. We want to continue to have a positive climate, uh, and environment at the middle high school and elementary levels. The reality is, most of these students, it's the, it's the middle and high school level, uh, because that's where their choices come. There are much more limited choices at the elementary level. There are some. I'm not saying there are no choices. Uh, there are some students who are in, uh, private religious academies. But there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of elementary charter schools in this area. You know, you know, obviously Rising Tide doesn't start until fifth grade. So the, most of our students who are choosing out are doing so at the middle and high school level because that's where they have choices. You know, obviously, our charter school attendance is, uh, steady, but it's, that is actually the largest financial impact on the district. You know, so we pay a charter school tuition for all those students who are going off to charter schools. And I skipped this one, but it's an important one. School choice. So we have eight students who are choicing out of the district, uh, but we have eighty-two students who are choicing in. So we're plus seventy-four in school choice. So that, obviously, that has a positive financial impact that helps balance off some of the negative financial impact of the charter school assessment. It's not apples and oranges. It's, uh, we wish it was. We wish that we had, you know, because we have, what? I'll, I don't want to base, I don't want to say the wrong number. I go back to my numbers. Uh, we have sixty-nine students at charter schools. We have eighty-two schools choice, eighty-two kids choice again. We wish that was a wash. It's not a wash. But there is some, uh, you know, financial benefit by having, uh, the school's choice, the school choice students, uh, come in. And right now, you know, our largest, we have thirty-one students from Wareham, seventeen from Plymouth, sixteen from Middleborough. Uh, those are the three, uh, communities where we bring in the most students, uh, through school choice. I think that's all I have on school enrollment. And I'll take any questions people have.
Scott, you mentioned eighty-seven kids, uh, in the kindergarten class?
Yes.
We have.
Eighty-nine, I believe.
Eighty-nine, sorry.
Seven, I think I said the right words.
Do we have statistics on the five-year-olds, four-year-olds, three-year-olds in town? And do we, do we know if we're trending?
So we did, we actually just recently requested, uh, every year we're allowed to actually request, uh, the live births. Uh, for five years preceding. Uh, so we recently got that, uh, information. And it was in the eighties. Last year, I'll say it was in the sixties. And talking to, um, Ruby and Kelly Anulovich, who tracked this at the elementary school. If that number's in the eighties, that tends to mean we're going to have a kindergarten class of. Hundred, hundred and ten. Uh, there's a lot, kids move in, it changes. It is not a direct cor, there's not a direct correlation between. This is the number, this is how many kids enroll. So, you know, last year that, when we got that, I don't remember the exact number, but it was in the sixties. And we ended up enrolling eighty-nine, right? Uh, so this year it's in the eighties. We're hoping we're going to enroll over a hundred kids in kindergarten next year. I have a look at the three and four-year-olds.
I was just wondering if it was a trend or if it was a liar.
You know, it's a, I mean, it's a little bit of a trend because if you really think about, uh, the second grade class is also small. It's only a hundred kids. You know, so we have two out of three classes where it was around or less than a hundred students. So hopefully that's a trend that doesn't continue. Hopefully we'll get another class of one twenty, uh, in, in the next couple of years.
We typically get all five of those, uh, school choice.
We generally fill the five school slot choices in kindergarten. You know, it's just, I think something the committee might have to consider, you know, we'll, we'll look at it a little bit, is maybe considering more kindergarten slots. You know, not making a recommendation for that tonight, but at least want to put it out there. That that might be a consideration because that's where we tend to fill it. We tend to fill those kindergarten slots. I think there's only been one year where we haven't filled all five. I think there was a year we had four. But we generally fill those five slots. Any other enrollment questions?
Thank you for presenting our data. I just want to say that, um, this was a, a. Common topic of conversation at the M A S C, uh, business conference, uh, this past week. And that a lot of districts are seeing, uh, decline in their enrollment. So Carver is not alone in that trend.
Yeah, even looking at the presentation we just made on pathways from Desi's, uh, you know, data story. They've seen less than a one percent increase of enrollment statewide. You know, stay, enrollment across the state of Massachusetts is very flat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh my goodness gracious. Okay, so that brings us to athletic surveys.
Athletic surveys. For a couple of years, so in, for two years, the twenty twenty, um. Two twenty-three and the twenty-three, twenty-four years. Uh, we had athletic, athletes and families complete surveys at the end of each athletic season. Uh, when Kelsey came on as athletic director, uh, it's something we had talked about. She made a decision to not continue those surveys. And, um. She actually instituted a process last year of interviewing seniors about their experience in the program at the end of each season to try to gather information about how, uh. You know, what takeaways students might have or thoughts they might have about how to improve the programming. Uh, some members, uh, some parents and some members of the school committee. Some members, some parents and some members of the school committee would like to see the surveys returned. And have asked that we take some time today and discuss the idea of having surveys of our athletes and families at the end of athletic seasons. Kelsey and I talked about this a little bit. Kelsey, Kelsey was just, she was unable to be here this evening, but I said I would share her thoughts on this. She said if, you know, if the committee did decide to go forward and ask that we do that, that she'd like to create the survey. Obviously, we have the old survey and we could go back. I could share with the one we used during those two school years. But she'd like to be the one who, to build the survey, get some feedback from some coaches and from some students and from some parents. She wants, she wants to be very clear from her perspective that any data collected from those surveys would be provided to the coaches at the end of their seasons. So this is not, it's anonymous from the standpoint of not putting a name on it. But ultimately, parents and community members have to know that that data is going to be shared with the coaches. So whatever information you give, whatever comments you make, the coaches are going to see that. It's not only for the administration and for the athletic director to look at. And then Kelsey just said she'd like, she'd like to say that also she encourages athletes and families to set up a meeting with her, to communicate with her directly or to communicate directly with their coaches with any concerns, their issues that arise during a season. That ultimately, our position should be, if you have a concern about what's happening in athletics, you should follow that process. You should talk to the coach. If you're unhappy with what the coach has to say, you should talk to the athletic director. If you're unhappy with what the athletic director has to say, there's still a concern, you can talk to the building principal. And so one of her concerns about going forward with surveys is that some people maybe avoid that process and just say, ah, at the end of the year of the survey, I'll give how I feel about the season. And not really, she's not really be willing to meet with coaches and the athletic director, share concerns and say, I'll just share my concern through the anonymous survey. So she wanted to raise that as a concern. Something for the committee to consider. So with that, I'll open it up to your discussion about, and then, you know, if the committee would like to see us go forward with surveys, that's something that we'll work on with Kelsey and Mrs. Cabral and go forward.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts they want to share other than me?
I like surveys in general. So, I mean, I'm all for surveys. I mean, and surveys when it comes to courses that kids take at the end of the course, having a survey. Those things, I like those types of things. So I'm for, I'm for the surveys.
I think that, if I recall correctly, in the past, we may have had some difficulties receiving responses on some of the surveys. Am I recalling that correctly?
Yes, you are.
And so like, and it's not necessarily an accurate reflection. And I do think that if there is an issue, following that process is probably the best way to handle it because if you wait until the end of the season, the damage is done. What, like, what's that certain, do you know what I mean? Like, if, if a student has an issue with a coach or another player and they're like, we'll just wait till the survey, well, that's a conversation that didn't happen. That's, that's a problem that didn't get addressed. So people are walking away with icky feelings and, oh, I get to say it happened at the end, but I didn't get to fix it. And I think that one of the things we want to teach our students is that you kind of handle things head-on. Like, you don't let it just go and passively aggressively put it into a survey. That you say, okay, I didn't like this. I don't, I feel like I'm not getting my fair share of playtime. Can we talk about what I can do to get more of that? That would be
Actually, that's a good summary of what Kelsey's concern was about the surveys. I will say though, in terms of data, last time we did do the surveys, because I went back and looked at some of the results, there was a lot of positives as well. There wasn't, it wasn't like the, it wasn't like the surveys were all negative. There was a lot of positives. And actually, I had made a school presentation in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four about the survey data. And it was actually like, well, no, people, and overall, people had positive things to say about their athletic experience. And we, and I use, I use that survey data alone to say, because I think it's, at that time, I don't, I think it's less the case now. I think at that time, there was a little bit of an undercurrent of maybe people aren't having great athletic experiences. And I was like, well, I don't know. We used to do surveys and a lot of people had a lot of positive things to say about what's happening in athletics. The, and Katie had answered, it was mixed in terms of turnout. It was, certainly was, certainly was a hundred percent by this page.
Right, yes. I remember there were some people that didn't receive them.
Yeah, I just remember there was like some issues with it.
Yeah. In terms, I'm kind of caught in the middle of this one because I feel like by only interviewing seniors and then you have parents and children who don't want to go through that process where they talk to the coach because maybe they're intimidated or don't feel comfortable doing that, don't want to talk to Kelsey. There's a whole slew of athletes that we're not getting any voice from at all. Like, including all those kids that play on JV who don't play on varsity. You know, we've got several JV teams where those kids don't really have a voice.
If we get them a proper education, just keep on
Yeah, make sure we
exploring the idea of education of, okay, you have these two avenues of commenting, whether it's during the season or it's through the, through the survey.
And, you know, as long as Kelsey's process is also well documented and well communicated.
Right.
That's, you know, that, that that's the process, you know, go to the coach, go to the athletic director, go to administration if that's what you need to do in the end.
Repetitive, too.
Yeah, repetitive. It needs to be, if that's the way it's going to continue, it needs to be a consistent message and it needs to be communicated often. Because people are not, that's not going to be their first, I mean, not that the survey is going to be the first thing that they go to either. It's just, I would just be concerned about some of the underclassmen that aren't playing on varsity teams just having a voice and, you know, it's, it's easier when you're older to do that. Like, a lot of kids older advocate for themselves. A lot of those middle schoolers and eighth graders or whatever that are on those teams won't. And I would like to see them have a voice.
Well, Scott mentioned that, you know, when we were doing surveys, a lot of them were very positive. And I think that's a valuable thing to have, too. Because without the survey and say, a parent doesn't want to go to the coach, doesn't, fears retaliation, fears some sort of negative consequence from that, what they'll do is at the end of the season or at the end of their child's career is they'll go on social media and they'll say how terrible Carver's athletics are and how they mistreated their kid. They didn't have any kind of outlet to express that otherwise. And also, then you can say, but look at, ninety-eight percent of these responses are fairly positive. And so this is an outlier and this is a situation we could have dealt with had you come forward at the time.
It just, knowing for my own child at this point, the, this, I mean, she's not playing high school sports yet, obviously, but it's that, there's a certain age range. No, Mom, don't, don't talk to them. Don't, I don't want you to talk to them. I don't want you to do anything about it. Like, they're, they just don't want you involved because they think it's going to make things worse. So that's why I'm thinking for the younger students that maybe a survey isn't a bad idea just because they may not, they may not even be telling their parents they're having a problem.
Yeah, and I certainly wouldn't want this to replace the process of going to the coach or to Kelsey and, and following that path. Just to me, it's just an additional way for those that may be wary of speaking up. I know I've heard from some people in the community who have spoken up before, haven't seen the change they advocated for, and don't want to speak up again. So I've had multiple people ask me about this as a result of that. And not necessarily to say that all of those people are unhappy. And I certainly always encourage people to reach out to their coach, to reach out to Kelsey, to reach out to, you know, Mr. McGinnis or, or Mr. Antala, Mrs. Cabral. I always, always advocate for people to contact administration because everyone cares about our students and wants to make sure that they're having a good experience. But you can't take action if you don't know. So to me, this is just another, another outlet to give them an opportunity to express their experience. And yeah, I hope that ninety-nine point nine percent of them are positive. I hope a hundred percent of them are positive. I just think it's important for us to, again, get those voices of students who may be afraid to speak up or some of the teams that don't have seniors on them, where she might not get their voices. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Have we used the data that we've collected in the past to make changes to the program?
I'm not sure.
Well, obviously, from a, from a reflection standpoint, the data in the past was shared with the coaches. So the coaches saw people's feedback. And they were shared with the admin team at the time, including the athletic director. You know, I don't know if we can say there's a direct line of this survey data led to this, right? But I think that, I think the professionals that we work with within the school community are reflective practitioners. And if you give them a set of data and there's a concern that's raised, even if maybe their, I'm not saying this was their first reaction or anyone's first reaction, but even if someone's first reaction is defensive, but then it's having that conversation and working through it and say, hey, this, there's a little theme here. So think about that theme in terms of how you approach what, what you're doing in terms of how you're managing your team, how you're working with your team, how you're interacting with your student athletes, how you're interacting with your parents, how you're interacting with the community and see those things. And then the things that are positive, take those positives and build on them and make them better. The survey data was not used as part of the evaluation system. So, you know, it can't be, so we're not, we're making very, we're also making a clarification that that, in the past, it wasn't. And the goal here would be that the survey data would be part of the evaluation system for coaches.
Right. I'm sure clearly if something, you know, egregious or nefarious were to come out of a survey, I'm sure there'd be an investigation done and you would take it from there and
Yeah, if someone made like a very specific allegation of outside of that happen, then
Yeah.
then we know, and we will do what we'd always do, follow it up and follow through and investigate appropriately.
Agreed. So that was where, that's where I was coming from in terms of this. Again, because I've received a lot of feedback from parents about this just this past weekend also.
You do.
So if someone would like to make a motion that we reinstate them, they can do that or not, I just thought it would be good for us to have a discussion as a committee to see where we were and what we felt. I kind of feel like we hired Kelsey and we should trust what she thinks is best. That's just like, but again, I don't have a child that plays sports. So I'm looking at it a little differently maybe than someone that has a child playing sports.
Well, this is definitely the most common thing that's ever mentioned to me about anything in charter schools. The sports and the, the surveys and the, you know, what's going wrong here, what's going right there and everything else. So people certainly have a lot to say.
They do.
And we're here to ultimately serve the community and it seems like that's what the community wants.
I tend to agree with that. I actually got a lot of feedback about the same thing this weekend. In particular, about the younger athletes not having any kind of voice really.
The only other stipulation that Kelsey, well, the only thing that Kelsey wanted to bring to the committee, which I agree with, is she said she would not be prepared to have the surveys for this fall sports season. You know, so she would develop the survey, she, because she wants to get some input from some people. And, and also, we feel like, which we did last time, is we did notify the coaches in advance that the survey was going to be given. So she says she thinks she could have it in place for the end of winter and that she would tell the winter coaches, there's going to be a survey. And they would be a part of creating it. But we would not necessarily go back and give that survey to the current parents of the fall coaches from the fall seasons.
Okay, so then I would encourage the parents from the fall seasons to reach out to the coaches and to Kelsey and to administration if they need to. And that's fine. I wouldn't expect it, she'd have it ready for the fall season anyway. That would be an unrealistic expectation.
Is anybody still playing? Uh, no, I know volleyball lasts until Friday. So football, Thanksgiving.
Football is Thanksgiving.
So football is the Thanksgiving game against Middleborough.
Winter sports start December.
And winter sports start the Monday at Thanksgiving.
Yep. Yep, so just would encourage anyone from fall sports, if they have any feedback, to please provide that to the coach or to our athletic director. This is a tough one because I don't really want to step on Kelsey's toes because I do think we should trust her to do her job. But I'm, like I said, I'm just worried about those kids that are on, playing with the older kids, but on the younger side of those teams that just aren't, they're not there to, I guess, advocate for themselves. And I have seen a lot of that. And I've had a few parents reach out to me about that just based on observations. So I feel like that we need some sort of mechanism, at least for those athletes.
Yeah, and I mean, I can see that the fear from people of retribution or having it come back to your player is definitely real. And some of the players feel that way also, based on my experience this past year and just what I spoke with a parent about over the weekend. So I know that that's a concern. Like, and it's not that I don't trust Kelsey to do her job. I want to be clear with that. It's not that I don't have confidence in her, but I do worry about the teams where there aren't seniors. And honestly, seniors are on their way out. You would hope that that would give them, I guess, help them feel freer to be honest in their responses. But I know that some of them might just not want to rock the boat. And I mean, hopefully, like I said, hopefully, their responses will be positive. But I just think it's important to have that option for communication. And if we're doing great, that's great. Like, let's hear more of how we're doing great with athletics for our community.
It's not negative focus, it's just to get feedback.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind making the motion to bring back, to bring back the surveys.
What's a
That's what I mean, make the motion.
This isn't our decision though, is it? It's a, it's a recommendation.
Yeah, so ultimately, this would be a recommendation to the superintendent. Is it? Well, but you can, you can make a motion, make a recommendation to the superintendent. You know, ultimately, we can have that discussion of whether requiring an athletic survey is in the purview of the school committee unless you were going to create and adopt a policy that athletic surveys were a requirement, which is not the discussion right now. We didn't create a policy. But, but you can certainly make a recommendation to the superintendent, which the superintendent will follow.
And per Bill's point, too, it seems like there are community members who are missing these and asking for them. They want that as well.
Yeah, so I think, Jackie, if you can, you can make a recommendation that we reinstitute surveys.
All right, I will, I do recommend that we reinstate the surveys.
We need to
Is that, is that
That's it?
Second?
Oh, second. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so we'll go from there.
So I will, I will take that recommendation back to Kelsey and we will begin to work on developing the surveys.
Okay. And if she wants to have a meeting with the athletic policies subcommittee, we can certainly do that.
Okay, sounds good.
To delve into it further. Okay, so next we have upcoming events. My link brought me just to this page.
Yeah, so
Which is great.
Wow, this is a, so this
And there's, this is like, this week is awesome.
So I decided to take a different approach on terms of upcoming events. You know, our old system, which we've had for a long time, was a physical list that, and we used to create that physical list and we used to actually like give it to Catherine Gallerani, the Carver reporter, reporter in the audience. And then she would take it and publish all the events. We all, as we learned earlier at the meeting, I think we've known for a long time, that there is no longer a Carver reporter. But there's the Carver Journal. And Gina is sharing and asked the Carver Journal to retweet or put out or repost information that's happening in the schools. But we said maybe for this segment, what we should be doing is directing people to the website. So if we take two minutes each meeting and say, hey, here's what's happening this week, November seventeenth to twenty-first, we have early release tomorrow for an election. I think people know about that. You know, we have Bring the Change, Carver Elementary School Spirit Week. As the, as our ambassadors talked about, we have Elementary Family Game Night on Thursday the twentieth. And next week, we have Winter Sports Registration on Monday the twenty-fourth. So those are the big events coming up. And then on here, if you go to this web, if you go to this, this piece of the webpage, like what's happening this week in the news, you can also click on the calendar and you can find out everything that's happening in the Carver Public Schools over the next couple of months. All that information is here. And instead of going over a list each meeting, we'll just say, hey, try to drive people to the website, get them to take a look at the website and the calendar to find out the great things that are happening in the Carver Public Schools over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, and it's great. I've gotten so much feedback about the ability to listen to it as like a podcast style. People absolutely love that. People absolutely love that. They're like, this is the coolest thing, not like I can just listen to it when I'm driving in my car and I can listen to it however, however many times I need to and not have to read.
The podcast is great.
So, yeah.
From NotaKella, the magic of AI.
Well, thank you for that. I hope that members of our community will attend events and sort of support our students. Okay, so that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent and financial--
And I'm glad to turn the mic over to our--
I'm sure your voice needs a rest, you've been talking for an hour and thirty minutes.
All right, folks, we've got your financial update for the meeting. Busy, obviously, in Washington. Happy, I'm sure you've all read that the government shutdown is finally over, reopened after the longest in our history, about forty-three days. For the most part, we were unskate, which is wonderful. In particular, one thing that's interesting with this CR is that continued resolution is that the USDA's nutrition portion of their budget is funded for the remainder of their fiscal year, sort of overlaps the beginning of our school year. That's not typically how it's done, so that's nice that we, if there's any future interruptions, food service funding that ultimately helps fund and offset the large majority of the cost for universal lunch and breakfast programs will at least be uninterrupted through the--
That's good news.
On Beacon Hill, not quite as happy news, so I think we talked a little bit about this at our last meeting, but I just want to underscore it. There's been some changes in the federal level that ultimately impact the amount of state revenue that's going to come to the Commonwealth. There's some federal rule changes that impact the amount of like reimbursement that they're going to get. It's not short money to the tune of about $650 million. The state sort of had this on the radar but wasn't sure how it was going to shake out as part of the budget cycle last year, so they have put away some buffer into their budget. You've got about eight hundred million in total buffer for, for the FY26 Commonwealth's budget. So there's some room to deal with that implication. Couple of signals that you're hearing from Beacon Hill though, none of them really look great unfortunately. So one of them is from the Secretary of Executive Office for Administration of Finance. Essentially because of these reductions in federal revenue, there's some considerations for what are called nine C cuts. Essentially, the rule is pretty straightforward. It gives the governor some latitude to make reductions in total expenses just within the executive portion of the state government to compensate when revenues are going to be lagging short. So when you look at that six hundred and fifty million that they're not going to get from the feds, plus they've been a little bit sluggish when it comes to state revenue coming in, so like actual taxes coming in from the state. You put those two together, it's not a great recipe right now at the state level. Couple of the things that the state has sort of signaled for, one is some consideration to use their stabilization funds. So they've got a pretty healthy stabilization account for the state, it's about 12% of their total operating budget, which is good. And the other has been exploring some buyouts with state employees. They've started meeting with some unions and talking with some of the state unions to say like, hey, what would this look like? Is this feasible as well? At this time, no action's been taken, but all of the financial officials at the state have sort of been signaling that they're going to probably want to take some action or at least seriously explore some action unless some change in revenue stream, you know, occurs in the next several months, right? So more to come on Beacon Hill. Why that's important to us, obviously, is that typically mid-January is when we get the governor's budget and that influences how much funding ultimately comes to communities for education, right? So we'll keep a tight eye on that and keep you informed if we see any changes there. Grant awards. We do have a private grant appropriation that I asked the committee to vote on this evening. So the Bradford Cole family has generously donated the remaining balance of their trust over to the Carver Middle High School Scholarship Program. The total amount, $34,403.76. That's been in the process for about a year now. They had had a scholarship program that had always been in place here in Carver. They'd moved out of state and had gotten jammed up on some like transactional challenges at their state. They've since been resolved, which is excellent. And so if the committee would be so inclined, we'd love to get an approval of that and we can put that into our scholarship account.
That is excellent. Very generous.
Yeah, very generous.
All right, so that's--
And then the warrants.
And then the warrants, you want to--
And then the warrants, yep. Your warrants there for quarter two are in front of you there. Grade out is what you've already voted on. The, those that are not grade out are the most recent expenses for quarter two. And no transfers this time. We'll typically do that at the end of quarter two. That'll give you a nice halfway point.
Do you want us to take those separately?
Yes, please.
Separate.
Okay. Okay, I move to approve the FY26 warrants as presented this evening.
Wait a second. We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the donation for the Bradford Cole Scholarship in the amount of
Wait a second. We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very, very much.
Very generous. The Cole family, they're very, very generous.
We'll send them a letter with our gratitude from the school district.
Okay, thank you very much.
For sure.
Yeah, by the way, I just want to make clear, I think it was clear, but I just want to make clear that the Bradford Cole family has been supporting the school district for many, many years. This scholarship's been in place for a long time.
Yeah.
And then just that, they're going to now ask us to hold the funds.
Yeah, and it's just great that kids are thinking of the state, right? So it's nice that they thought of us and didn't decide to--
To allow us to continue it.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
Continue that legacy.
Appreciate it, much appreciate it.
Okay, so that brings us to the FY27 capital plan.
Yes. So this is a plan that we reviewed in detail at our last meeting and tonight's the vote for it. So to be considerate of your time, I'm going to move more quickly through it, but I'd ask you to stop me at any moment if you want to do some drill down or you have some follow-up questions on any of the projects, yeah? So the overview, again, I'll mention just three quick things. We structured the plan in three different buckets, facilities, equipment, transportation technology. All of that's tied to our educational vision and our educational blueprint, which is reflected there. And we always think about, you know, this two tension points as you're doing the development of this plan. We want to make sure that we cover all of the needs of your school department while also balancing the financial constraints of the taxpayers here in Carver. We make a concerted effort, the school department, to try to find alternative funding sources or alternative means to try to get the resources to get these projects done to the tune of about $1.3 million in a combination of both capital operating grants each year. That's just, again, your summary of your existing facilities, won't spend too much time on that. And your first group of projects are your facilities and equipment. There you see your 10-year outlook and we'll do some drill down to FY27. First project FY27 is a continuation project. We've done a few of these projects over the past several years called the Middle High School Classroom Modernization and Pathways Plan. Essentially, it's intended to extend the useful life of your facility with investments in furniture, fixtures and equipment, FFNE for short. This current year, we're investing in the history department with some new desks and furniture for history classes. The proposal for FY27 will be world languages as well as a refinish of your auditorium stage flooring. The next proposal for FY27 is part of your athletics program. It would be new furniture, fixtures and equipment for your weight room. Again, maintaining the facility itself, but refreshing all the equipment that students and athletes use on a regular basis. Your next proposal is over at the Central Office and Alternative Program Building. Three Carver Square houses the large majority of your central office staff as well as one of your special education sub-separate programs. As you can see, the siding is just in need of replacement. That'll include flashing at any of the existing trim. This next project is also a continuation. We'd finish out phase two of two. Over at elementary school, you may recall, this current year, we actually moved that berm back in the back near the bus lane. That gives us a little bit more space for our kiddos to run around. You can see there the fresh chips that are down. The intention in proposal number two would be to fill that space with some swings, which are in high demand right now at the elementary school, as well as some other elements. Kudos to Ms. Maestis, who's been working very closely with a group of parents at the elementary school to really help develop the vision on exactly what other elements they might want to have in addition to swings. That group has been looking and exploring some amount of donation to help offset this cost as well, sort of another way for us to try to offset the overall cost to the taxpayer. This next one is just a pause, just to keep you informed. You may remember last year, we did about part of this project.
Yep.
What we've been trying to think about is how do we maintain those spaces that you see highlighted in the aerial view there? They're really high frequency use spaces for our elementary school students, but that grass area, right about this time of year, with, you know, 750 little feet on it on a regular basis, just can't maintain grass. We were originally looking at some kind of artificial surface with a cork, a natural wood fill. However, we actually found a new material that we haven't explored before. It's a perforated rubberized matting that allows you to maintain a rubberized surface but let grass grow up through it. Before we take any further steps and request any additional money, we want to just try to do a pilot of that area. So for FY27, we're requesting to postpone the second phase of this project to allow us to try that pilot. If it works really well, we'll come back in '28. If it doesn't, we'll pivot and take a back look at the artificial surface area. The last proposal for FFNE, as you see it here, is mobility equipment for some of our medically fragile kiddos at the elementary school. Your transportation summary is pretty straightforward. It gives you a summary of what your fleet looks like to date as well as your 10-year overview. FY27 is pretty simple. It's simply one 71-passenger bus to continue our replacement cycle, maintain the fleet. Technology, again, an overview of our technology program and you can see your 10-year projection in technology as well. The only thing I'd say on technology is that one of the things that is unique about this upcoming cycle for its capital, back when we were in the pandemic, we got an influx of federal money to ramp up all of our one-to-one Chromebook devices. Those devices have come to end of life. Obviously, there's no more federal money for those sorts of things. So we're about to begin a new re, a new replacement cycle for your Chromebooks for kiddos. The thinking in this cycle is that over the next couple of years, we replace those Chromebooks in chunks, followed by a single grade-level replacement cycle. This way, your replacement is going to be more frequent, but much smaller in terms of your total, you know, annual investment, which actually is page 13, I should wait to page 13, but that's what that describes to you. And then at the middle high school, you'll be phase two of two to complete a staff device turnover. Those are going to be laptops for your staff over the middle high school. And last but certainly not least, while it's not as exciting as a lot of the other projects, it'll be phase one of two of some network infrastructure investments. Again, not super exciting stuff, but really this is the backbone of all the technology that you invest in. What we planned for, for phase one, which would be FY27, will be a combination of network switches as well as wireless access points. One thing that's important to keep in the back of your mind, that figure that you see there at $75,000 reflects E-rate funding as well, so it's about half the figure of what it actually costs you. All in, you're at about $150,000 for this kind of a project in just phase one. I say that for two reasons. One, there's certainly been some talk at the federal level about either reducing the scope of E-rate or removing it entirely. Currently in the FY26 CR, federal level, continuing resolution, the E-rate appropriation has not been touched, which is good. And so we're hopeful, but I just wanted to flag that for you, that ultimately if the federal government did remove the E-rate project, you'd still need to do this, this network project in some capacity, but our cost would probably be double. That was the lightning round of all things capital. You see your executive summary across all areas of your capital plan, out 10 years in the final page. Again, obviously, out FY36, your figures are much more about estimates and projections to really flag the kind of projects that you're going to need versus firmer numbers. As we get closer, we start to firm those numbers up as we go. I can answer any questions that you've got on any of the projects or any of the buckets or do some drill down if you'd like, but if the committee will be willing to vote this, this figure, we'd like to try to move that forward as well.
I move that we approve the FY--
Can I just--
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
The mobility equipment that you mentioned, it's just not on my list. What is the total?
It's $25,000 in specialized mobility equipment and it's going to be a combination of accessibility and mobility, so everything from like bathroom access to emergency access. One of the things that, so I've written that a little bit broadly, I want to apologize in advance. I try to make sure that we give you lots of transparency about how the funding is being spent, but also because this equipment is specific to just a couple of kiddos, I want to be considerate of their personal information. But the long and short is, they're really small kiddos and so we just don't have equipment that fits their bodies.
And the, the weight room renovation and the playground equipment, we have some sort of like idea, right, of like, we're going to get six treadmills and like, just the capital allocation has been a little bit detail-oriented the last couple of years. Sure.
Jackie-- For sure.
More of that than I can, but just so that, you know, we know kind of what we're going, it's not just a ballpark number like, oh, let's get a hundred grand and--
No, that's correct. We have two, right now we have two proposals that are in detail with like the 3D overview, the renderings and all of that. And that happens to be one of them that you see there. We haven't finalized that yet because we'd want to have the appropriation, but I'd be happy to answer questions from the capital committee if you want to do some drill down. When it comes to the playground equipment, same is true, we've got some renderings of that. Two things in the playground equipment, one, everybody wants the swings, that's, that feels like a lock for folks, but there's lots of conversation about what those other elements could be. And so we haven't firmed up those final elements. We want to get the community's input, those families' input still on those. But the scope remains the same, so we wouldn't go beyond the scope that you see there.
And I'm sure we're going to be asking for plans and everything like that, but this is just preliminary, so I see that.
Yeah, and happy to share those plans as well if you want to take a look at those two.
Okay, I have one question. The tennis courts, are they, are they, are they on there at all?
They are not.
They're not, right?
I believe that's a CPC. It was, it was last time. It was a CPC, no, okay. It doesn't, doesn't happen, but it was, it was last time the tennis courts were up.
Yeah, because that's the, that's the thing that I get asked about by some students is what's happening with the tennis courts, like are they going to be repaired and that type of thing? So it's why I was asking.
Maybe an extra schedule.
Well, it's not on there, that's why I was like--
It's not on.
So would we go, I mean, I have no idea how much it would cost. Absolutely none, I'm sure it would be very expensive.
What the pickleball course costs.
It'd cost a lot.
Yeah, I think we're going to need, I think we're going to need other funding for that.
Yeah. Yes, so just wanted to ask that.
I will say, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Mr. Seatonoff, but I do know that project is on the town's radar as well. I was just taking a quick look at my like file list here, I don't have a copy of theirs at this moment, but I do believe it's in the discussion as to maybe this is a, either CPC or simply a town-wide project.
Okay. Great. Look forward to, to more details as they're available.
Look forward to playing on those new courts.
You're not, you're not down with pickleball?
I haven't been down there yet, they look fantastic.
They look, they look beautiful, yeah, they do. People are there, just about every single day that I drive them by, there are people there. I mean, I've seen people there in the rain. I know that--
Oh, good.
Pickleball, people are committed.
There's a community app that people are using to schedule or to like meet up with people.
It's called Pickle Ball, after a dog named Pickles.
Oh, really?
We, we, some of our kids really love pickleball, so that we like looked up how it started, it was dads trying to make a game for their kids in their backyard in the 60s and they named it after the dog that would go chasing the balls, Pickles.
Oh, that's a little, little fun fact for them.
Yeah. Absolutely, that's great. Absolutely, that's great. I'm glad there's an app. That's a great way to build community.
Yeah. I'll pull up the...
Yeah, that's great.
Team Meat, that's what it's called.
Team Meat.
Excellent.
Yeah, that is great.
Oh, Team Reach, sorry.
Oh, Team Reach, okay.
Yeah.
So great concept. Okay, so...
He's a member.
I remember the Capitol football community, they had to play there.
Uh-huh, interesting. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve the capital plan? I move to approve the FY '27 capital improvement plan as presented this evening.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for all that detail. We greatly appreciate it. Okay, so that brings us to the second reading of two policies.
Both these policies are related to competency determination and graduation. So this is the second reading of policy IKF-E competency determination. At our last meeting, I did make a full presentation about this in terms of the concept of, you know, through the vote last November, a year ago. And that we got in the MCAS exam. What I removed was using the MCAS exam as the competency determination for graduation. So the school districts had to develop a new competency determination policy. So we've gone through that. DESI actually recommended a format for us. We brought this policy in with the administrative team, department chairs, got feedback, presented it to the teachers, presented it to the policy subcommittee, and we'd like to move forward with the second reading. So after that whole process, there were no suggestions for edits or revisions. I'm glad to go through the presentation I made last time again, if you want me to. But if you don't feel like I need to, that's fine as well. So you let me know. Do you want me to go through the whole presentation? Are people willing to, comfortable with the policy and willing to approve it based on a second reading?
I don't think so.
With it, it's like a pair of slippers.
I did refer.
This is actually the third time we've...
We've talked, the second time we've talked about this policy. And we've had several conversations about competency determination since last spring, actually. Because we revised our graduation policy last year, we had a couple of presentations about it. This goes into effect, this will go into effect immediately for the graduating class of 2026. We have to actually submit this policy to DESI by December 31st. So by the end of this year, we have to submit it to them. But the other thing we want to point out, which I guess, since you asked the question, I won't do the whole presentation. I won't do the whole presentation. But I guess we've got to go to the end of the presentation, which is Governor Healy's statewide graduation council. So the other thing is, there's a, I just want to make a note or make a mark for the community and for the committee that this is kind of almost, this policy, I think in some ways, is going to be a temporary measure. It's going to be a stopgap measure, is the word phrase I keep using. Because Governor Healy has this whole statewide graduation council. They developed the Vision of the Massachusetts Graduate. And the Commissioner of Education was at MASC, MASSS. He presented, he presented this document on the Vision of the Massachusetts Graduate. That council is going to be coming out with their recommendations in the spring for new graduation requirements. So I think we're going to be back at this again next year. So I think this is going to change. So I think it is important, too. So we've had a lot of conversations around this over the past year or two. And I think that this policy is going to be a little bit of, as I said, a stopgap until we start to implement this concept of, you know, of the recommendations of the statewide council, which actually, I think they're going to make suggestions that you make some policies tying to your local vision of graduate. And I think that that makes a lot of sense. I think it's aligned with the work we've been doing at the middle high school and that Mrs. Cabral's been leading at the middle high school in terms of vision of graduate. As I said, that's going to be coming out in the spring. And they're saying in the spring, they're going to provide a roadmap for implementation of the recommendations. So then they give us a timeline of, okay, within this period of time, you need to change your policy, change this policy we're approving right now, and adopt a new graduation policy or recommendation.
Yeah, their initial report is due December 1st, no lead even December 1st. So it'll be interesting to see how it shakes out because there is a lot of...
Discussion about it.
Discussion about what exactly competency is.
And in essence, our policy is stating that students meet competency by passing their final exams in their courses or already passing score on the MCAS exam, or passing the next highest-level course. So if, you know, if they didn't pass their final exam in 10th grade English by passing 11th grade English in that final, they would reach the competency determination. So in essence, a student who's going to, the student who meets all their graduation requirements as defined by the school committee is going to meet the competency determination through the policy that you're adopting.
Okay. Good? Yep. I move to approve policy IKF-E competency determination.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, related to this, we have to change the policy called Graduation Requirements. Second meeting of policy IKF. And ultimately, in the old IKF, we kind of defined competency determination. But now we have a whole separate policy that defines competency determination in more in-depth fashion. So in this policy, we just had to make a minor revision. Oh, my link's not coming up. Okay, maybe I don't have a link to the policy. So I'm not sure why I don't have a link there. But ultimately, we took out the definition of competency determination that was written into the policy in a sentence and say, because we have this whole other policy that defines competency determination. So that's really the change to policy IKF. Went through a first reading, went through the policy subcommittee. And at first time through, there were no recommendations for changes. So I would recommend that we move to approve this policy. It's coming up to you now.
Yep. Just a little delayed. You just have that one cross out.
Yeah, just the one cross out one.
Yep.
There it is. Through completing coursework based on academic standards of the sacred frameworks for grade 10 students. So we defined competency determination in the policy. Now we have a whole nother policy to define competency determination. That's why we're striking that line. So I would recommend we approve this policy through a second meeting.
I move to approve policy IKF, graduation requirements.
A second?
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. So we have one, oh no, we have two field trips that we need to review. I almost skipped that. This is for the English class to turn up to our theater to see A Winter's Tale in ninth grade English.
Yep.
That is in March. And then the other one is for student council to go to, I'm assuming this is their conference?
Yes.
Yeah, the MESA State Conference. Student Council, MESA State Conference.
And Trinity Rep is out of state and the conference is overnight. Those are those, these two need to be approved by the school committee.
No worries. Uh-huh, I didn't see that this was out of state. Where's Trinity Rep?
Providence.
Providence, okay. I have not been there before.
So I would recommend, recommendation to approve both these field trips.
Okay. Okay, I move that we approve the field trips as presented this evening.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great time, everyone.
Aye.
Hello. Sign these. I should know the date. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the school committee. And we have one item on the agenda specifically, which is the discussion reviewing of executive session minutes. It is something that we need to make a commitment to do on more of a regular basis than has been done in the past. I did speak with colleagues at the conference this past week about this process. Some just appoint their school attorney, their designee, or their agent. The people that I spoke with that do that have their attorneys on retainer. Because I said, wow, that could be costly depending upon, you know, what's happening in your district. And they all had them on retainer. I was like, interesting. I was like, great to know that you have a budget line item for that. And then others have designated their chair. It's just something that we need to, like I said, commit to doing a better job of moving forward. So those are the two, I guess, options that I discussed with people last week. So I wanted to put it on here so we can discuss it and then...
And the other option would be for the committee to continue to meet as a whole to review the minutes.
As they come.
Any executive session.
For 20 years or something, right?
On a regular basis.
It was recommended like three to, every three to six months.
Months, yeah.
Which is what I read today.
Or you could, so the choice is really whether you want to do it as a committee as a whole, or you want to appoint someone to do it.
Yep.
Stephanie's saying either, it doesn't have to be the chair, but I think most commonly, it's the chair or obviously, I didn't know some districts used legal counsel, but...
Yeah, that was news to me. I was like, wow, okay, that's interesting.
So if you use a chair, then you present the ones that you reviewed at the school committee meetings, saying that they're the ones that you...
Yeah, I would make sure through our legal counsel that they were, okay, to be submitted to the school committee for release. If there were any reservations, then we just let everyone know. Or we can just continue to do it the way that we have been doing it, but we just need to commit to doing it on a regular basis as things come up. So what is the will of the committee? I'm getting punchy.
I would, I would not want to appoint a single individual to this task. We're, you know, we're a committee that always likes to buy the people to do this job, so we just have to hang out a little bit later every three months and approve some minutes.
And approve some minutes, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we should make a motion to bring snacks to instead of executive session meetings.
I'm down for snacks.
Right? Snacks are always good.
Then no action is required. If you're going to stay at the status quo, no action is required.
Actually, we will stay status quo, but just on a more regular...
And if you want, at the next meeting, I could, we could post an executive session for that purpose.
Well, we'll probably have some catch-up to do, right?
Yes.
We have some stuff to do, yeah.
But then we may, we may go six months without an executive session.
Correct.
Yep, absolutely. All right, that's fabulous.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything they would like to report out?
At the conference, we, as a board, voted to recommend that schools stop using BMI. And that was it. That was the one resolution we made.
I think there were six others that were reauthorized.
Yeah, they were reauthorized.
So they'll continue to advocate for legislation on that point. But yeah, I thought it was very interesting that it was unanimous vote.
Except for that one poor one guy.
He was very clear, though.
He was, yeah, he stood up, he was like, I want to agree with this, but my district has told me not to. So he was the lone nay against it. It was really cute.
Against the BMI?
The BMI, yeah.
Yep, it was a...
It was a W-town.
Was it?
Wenchinton.
I can't remember where I was from.
We'll open him. I, he just was very funny.
There's a lot of W-towns.
I'm like, I know it, I remember W, but...
Yeah.
So that was it. That was what we did, accomplished on Friday.
Mm-hmm, yes. As well as?
Elections.
Oh, yes, elections. Stephanie is the vice president of MASC.
Yay!
Effective January 1st. Yes. Thank you.
We're super proud of you and super happy to have you represent us as well.
Oh, thank you very much. Yep, and we elected new leadership for Division Seven, which Carver is a part of. Kathy Lewis is chair, April Rossi is vice chair, and Margaret Souza is secretary. She's from Thelma, April's from Wareham, and Kathy is from Mashpee. And I just want to mention really quickly, December 6th, there is a Charting the Course that's taking place in Mashpee. So I will be attending that as an individual, as well as representing MASC to meet new school community members or people that are going for a refresher. So and I also just wanted to mention to everyone that you are more than welcome to take, retake Charting the Course at any time you may be interested in doing so. It's always good to revisit, and it's something that we're looking at modernizing. It used to be a two-day event, and now it's a one-day event. So I think way back when I went nine years ago, it was two days. I was up in Bedford. Even though I took it two years ago, I think somewhere else down the Cape. Just a good opportunity for a refresher of everything that falls within our purview. I want to say it was a great conference. There were over 1,000 people that attended. Thank you to those of you who were able to come down for dinner and hear the commissioner speak. I fear that there is definitely some type of an assessment or an exam in the future of graduation requirement. But I also hear that there are some agencies that are considering a lawsuit where we voted as a state to abolish MCAS. But that was just MCAS. It wasn't any type of testing. Like, that's the gray area that people are really debating right now around that. So it'll be interesting to see how that, how that pans for everyone. It was a great conference. It was announced today that it's going to be in Danvers next year. It's November 4th, 5th, and 6th, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, again.
Not too bad.
Which is, which will be here before we know it. And we, when do we meet again?
December 9.
December 9?
9.
December is it 9?
This is the second Monday.
Okay, yeah. So before... It's the 8th.
December 8th.
So just want to wish everyone in our community a very happy Thanksgiving, if you celebrate. I hope students enjoy time off and our teachers and staff as well. And I hope everyone gets to spend time with their friends and their family. And tomorrow is an important vote for our community, so I hope that people will show up and make their voices heard on the Old Colony Project vote that's up for consideration tomorrow from 12 to 8. Is that in the high school gym, middle school gym?
High school gym.
High school gym. So our regular polling place.
Regular polling place.
Does anyone have anything else? Okay then, if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn, that would be wonderful.
I move that we adjourn the November 17th, 2025, open session.
A second?
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are officially adjourned 8:09 PM on November 17th, 2025. Thank you very much, everyone.